Good morning and welcome to the Environmental and Planning Board meeting for April 21st, 2010. The meeting, for this meeting was posted outside the City Hall Bolton Board. Yeah, on Friday, April 15th, 2011. Because we're going to do a roll call here. Commissioner Garcia.
President.
Commissioner Foy. And Commissioner Rubik is absent at the moment. Our first case on today is, oh, I guess we're going to be reporting approval of minutes. We have approval of minutes for November 19th, 2007. I see that.
We don't have a quorum of people who were present at that meeting to vote on it, so they'll all have to be put over.
Okay, we'll just bring those back to the next meeting then. See here, we have no old business, a new business. First case today is Design Review Board, our Development Design Review Case Number PDD 2011-001. It's for Budget Rental Card. The location is 617 South Brand Boulevard. The applicant is Harry Wu and his staff is Villia Zemetitis. Senior Planner would give a report, I believe.
Before you do that, Villia, I think just the record should reflect that we have oral communications on the agenda and I assume we have no oral communications cards submitted for that item.
No, we have none.
Okay, good, thank you. Continue, Villia, I'm sorry.
There you go. The case before you is a Design Development Review Case, PDD 2011-001. The project is located at 617 South Brand Boulevard. The project involves redeveloping a vacant commercial building that's approximately 5,600 square feet and improving the adjacent parking lot directly to the south and essentially creating a car rental and leasing use. The project site is located in the South Brand Boulevard specific plan area. It's zoned CS, which is Commercial Services, Commercial Specialty Zone, with a Design Development Overlay. All projects located in the Design Development Overlay Zone must come before the Environmental Planning Board for review, for consistency in terms of design throughout the entire project and for review of compatibility with adjacent uses. This is a requirement, again, for the Design Development Zone and all projects within that particular zone. The existing property is, as mentioned, a 5,600-square-foot building. It was most recently used as a Hypnotica Lounge. It has been vacant since the closing of that particular lounge. The lot directly to the south is currently being used by Mercedes-Benz as for inventory parking. There was a covenant agreement that tied these lots together into one unified development, thereby creating a parcel size of just over 15,000 square feet, which would be the minimum parcel size required for new projects in this particular zone. The project is exempt from CEQA and staff approves with certain items pending the following findings. Now, to approve a new project in the Design Development Overlay Zone, the Environmental Planning Board must review six required findings and be able to make those required findings in order to approve the particular project. The first finding is that the proposed projects shall exemplify quality design in all of its elements and in general contribute to the city and immediately surrounding neighborhood as a place of high aesthetic and environmental standards, individuality, economic health and land use compatibility. The second finding is that the proposed use and character of the buildings, structures and other improvements shall be of such a character as not to cause the nature of local environment to materially depreciate in appearance, usability or value. The third finding is that the proposed building or structure and uses thereof shall be compatible with the developments of land in the general area, again, considerations of scale, height, bulk, materials, cohesiveness, community, traffic, site distance, et cetera, et cetera. The fourth finding would be that the proposed development shall be in conformity with applicable regulations and standards and other ordinances insofar as the location and appearance of the buildings and structures. The fifth finding would be that the proposed used building or structure shall not unreasonably interfere with the use or enjoyment of the property in the vicinity by the occupants and shall not adversely affect the public peace, health, safety and general welfare. And the last finding is that the proposed building or structure and its use shall be in compliance with the comprehensive general plan and the South Brand Boulevard specific plan and any applicable adopted plans. With that, with those particular findings, I'm just going to generally summarize the staff's analysis of those particular findings. The project itself is essentially just a reuse of an existing building. They are going to be repainting the building and improving the adjacent parking lot to be brought up to code with 20, 25 onsite parking spaces and all required landscaping. The project is including a new five-foot landscaping strip along the street edge of the property, and this would be along Brand Boulevard and the side street, which is Maple Street. This is, again, in compliance with the landscaping guidelines for the particular zone and they are providing the required shade trees within the parking lot. There will be a requirement that is proposed that all trees and landscaping be drought tolerant and in compliance with the MWD's Be Water Wise dot com list. The project at this time is also proposing a six-foot-high wrought iron fence to be located to, just to the back of the landscaping strip. You'll notice here, it's best seen on the site plan. So the primary entrance would be directly off of Brand Boulevard. You have handicap parking and some of the parking that was originally for the Hypnotica Lounge usurically go into the, into the adjacent parking lot. The landscaping strip is located, again, along the perimeter edge, the fencing to the inside of the perimeter edge, and they are reusing the existing building.
Question?
Yes.
Is all that landscaping that's on the plan, is that what's proposed or some of there are already existing?
All of this is brand-new landscaping. All of this is being introduced because right now, best seen on the aerial photograph that we have on the smart screen board, you'll notice that it's just a parking lot and right now they have a chain link fence.
Some of the palm trees are marked on the plan as existing.
They do have palm trees, best seen along there, the street trees, and then there is a parking palm tree directly, I don't want to touch the smart board, but directly adjacent to the building.
Are there additional palm trees planned to meet?
These are number one, I believe, existing trees to remain. No, these are the existing trees. So they are exist-
These are the existing-
Correct, along the edge and perimeter of the building. Now, the Planning Commission, back on February, I believe, 2021, February 16th, 2011, the Planning Commission actually approved a use variance in the CS zone. An auto-retail auto-leasing use is not a permitted use. The Planning Commission was able to make findings in order to grant the use variance to approve a retail, a car rental leasing use on this particular project site in the CS zone simply because most of the properties within that block face are auto-related type uses. There's the Mercedes-Benz dealership across the street. The majority of the properties to the north and south along Brand Boulevard are also zoned for auto-related uses that otherwise would have allowed for car rental, car leasing establishment. But it just so happens that this particular small block face north of Maple along Brand is zone CS Commercial Specialty, which for some reason is not, does not permit such uses. So based on the approval by Planning Commission, the use is actually then permitted through the use variance process. It is consistent with the general plan and the general plan elements in terms of being within the South Brand Boulevard. It is auto-oriented type uses and establishments geared toward those type of operations. And last but not least, it is a redevelopment of an otherwise vacant building, which for purposes, you know, obviously of the vitality in the neighborhood, it's best if there is an active type use that is essentially in operation that also deals with the consolidation of the existing parking lot, the improvements of the parking lot, and then you have the use itself within the building. So for those reasons and for reasons that are much more detailed in your staff report, staff does recommend approval by the Environmental Planning Board of this particular Design Development project. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
And two people who have filled out requests to speak here, they appear both to be part of the applicant's team. Ken Foo and Harry Wu, is that correct? Okay, so we normally give 15 minutes for the applicant's team to speak, so you, between the two of you, you'll have 15 minutes to speak. Who would like to go first?
I'll just use one minute. Harry Wu, address at 11747 Valley Boulevard, El Monte, California. I'm the applicant for this project and we trying our best to make this a good-looking, good-function and comply to the neighborhood and add to the neighborhood. So that's all we want to do. So I'm here available to answer questions.
Okay, well, we'll let the other gentleman speak and then we may have questions for the two of you.
He will not speak at this time.
Oh, okay. All right. I do have a question. I noticed that your plans call for a high-spiked fence across the front property line along Brand Boulevard.
Yes.
And when I drive along the Brand Boulevard and look at all the car dealerships and rental places there, almost none of them have any fences, along, at least along the Brand Boulevard frontage. Sometimes they'll have fencing along the side street. Would you be amenable to not having a fence across the front?
Yes, you know, we put that on, obviously for security reason, and I think there are other things we can do such as small metal-
Like bollards?
Yeah, inside of the landscape so it will not be visible from outside and we can do that as well. So if you want to make that a condition, I have no problem.
Okay.
Yeah, no questions.
Okay, there's other questions I have for you.
Thank you.
You have one follow-up question for Zemetitis. Do they need the 5% interior landscaping requirement, the parking lot?
To calculate corners, percussion conditions, the landing.
Okay. Okay. All right, I don't have any further questions. Do you?
No. I guess the only question I had that Ms. Zemetitis, you mentioned that, or I guess the report mentioned that the use variance permits both sales and rental and leasing, or all three, I guess. Did staff have any concerns, I guess my question, does staff have any concerns with that even though they're only doing rental and leasing?
Yes. There you go. The original application was for car rental and car leasing specifically. The zoning code actually groups car rental, car leasing and car sales all together as one, one sort of umbrella-type use.
Okay.
And that was presented to the Planning Commission as knowing-
Right.
-that even though right now they are proposing only car rental and car leasing, that by approving that use variance, they would be essentially granting all of the uses permitted under that umbrella. So that approval was done knowing that in the, in the future, the possibility of actually having car sales at this location would be approved.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess since I'm running this meeting, I can't make the motion.
Okay.
But I would appreciate a motion with the condition-
Sure.
-that Ms. Zemetitis mentioned that plant material shall be drought tolerant and in compliance with the MWD's Be Water Wise list as required by the Glendale Municipal Code. And also that the fencing along the Brand Boulevard frontage be replaced-
Replaced with what?
With the bollards to be no more than four feet high.
And if they, and forgive me just for clarification, you mentioned the Brand Boulevard, but I would assume that that also includes, that you would like to include the Maple Street frontage along the side perimeter?
Well, I think as, I mean, I'll refer to Mr. Garcia's opinion here, but when I drove along the street there, I noticed a number of dealerships that did have fencing along the side street.
So your concern's more about the Brand frontage than-
Yeah, and I think that in some of the zones in the South Brand Plan where auto sales are permitted, fencing is restricted to only the side streets, not a lot along the Brand Boulevard. So I mean, they're free to replace the fencing along the side street with bollards as well, but I myself wouldn't make it a requirement.
Okay. But that the bollards is not a requirement, it's just that if they so choose to secure that property, that bollards, no more than four feet high, be permitted. Okay. So with those, those two conditions and essentially the draft findings-
Yeah, let me try to motion if I can.
Please.
I'll move approval of Design Development Review Case Number PDD Number 2011-001 at 617 South Brand Boulevard with the six findings as outlined in the staff report with two conditions, condition number one being that the, all plant material be consistent with the Be Water Wise list on MWD's website and Glendale Municipal Code. And condition number two, that the fencing that's on the plan showing on Brand Boulevard be replaced with bollards no more than four feet in height? Is that what you said this far?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's my motion.
Okay, and I actually, I do have one more question for staff. The new freestanding sign in the corner-
Yes.
-that is permitted by code?
It would be permitted by code.
As-
As an-
Accessory ground sign?
As accessory ground sign, correct. Yes, your package actually is required for the Design Development Program, included all items, you know, all materials such as a sign program for this particular project. So they are proposing one, one wall sign above the main entrance and an accessory ground sign at the corner.
All right.
So I have a motion made by Commissioner Garcia is rejected past the gavel now that-
Yeah, pass the gavel in a second.
Commissioner Galanian joined us.
Pass it to him, let him, he's going to abstain anyway, so.
Exactly. So-
I'll second it.
So, and I have a second by Commissioner Foy. In terms of roll call, Commissioner Galanian is, will be abstaining. Commissioner Garcia?
Uh huh, yes.
Commissioner Foy?
Yes.
The motion passes 2-0. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is-
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is PEIF 2008-14, a Draft Environmental Impact Report, the Columbus Elementary School Joint Use Soccer Field at 425 West Milford Street. The applicant is the City of Glendale Community Services and Parks Department, and I will go to our staff, Eric Kraus, Senior Planner.
Thank you, Board Member Foy, members of the board. The purpose of today's meeting is for the Environmental and Planning Board to consider the adequacy of the draft environmental impact report, prepare for the proposed Columbus School soccer field and authorize that the draft EIR be released for public review and comment. The proposed project includes the replacement of an existing natural turf field with new artificial turf field on the campus of Columbus Elementary School. The proposed sports field is a joint-use project between the City of Glendale Community Services and Parks Department and the Glendale Unified School District. The proposed amenities include the installation of a 45, 49,500-square artificial turf soccer field, sports field lighting, a restroom facility that includes small storage area and a maintenance shed. A total of four 70-foot-high light fixtures are proposed for the project. The proposed light fixtures will be energy-efficient lights fitted with hoods to shield the glare and focus the light onto the sports field area. In addition, the proposed project would develop a walkways and security fencing. No scoreboards or sound application, sound application systems are proposed as part of the project. There is an existing paved parking lot with 53 parking spaces. It's immediately south of the project site and on the school campus, and that would be used for the soccer field when it's in use by the public. The school district will have control of the field until 6:00 PM on weekdays, and the public hours would be from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM on weekdays and from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM on weekends. This project is intended to serve the youth athletic programs and so no adult organizations would be allowed to use the proposed soccer field. The determination that an EIR was necessary was based on an analysis contained in the initial study prepared for the project, and then Impact Sciences was retained to prepare the EIR as the city's consultant. A notice of preparation was prepared and circulated for a public comment period on May 14th, 2010, for at least a period of 30 days. Staff did hold a public meeting on May 26th, 2010 at the Columbus Elementary School campus during the public review period to solicit comments from the public. Based on the notice of preparation and comments received during the public review period, the draft EIR focuses on and includes analysis of proposed projects' potentially significant impacts on aesthetic impacts in terms of impacts from the proposed lighting, air quality impacts from construction of the project, greenhouse gas impacts, noise and then traffic and parking impacts as well. The draft EIR addresses these issues referenced that are just mentioned and identifies potentially significant impacts, including site-specific and cumulative effects of the project in accordance with the provisions set forth in the State CEQA Guidelines. In addition, the draft EIR recommends feasible mitigation measures where possible that would reduce adverse environmental effects. And then no other resources were included in the environmental impact analysis due to the scoping of the NOP. The project also includes an analysis of three separate alternatives. One is the required no-project-no-development alternative, a no-lighting alternative and an alternative sites alternative. Okay, at this point, I'd like to introduce Ali Mir, who's with Impact Sciences, is going to go over a little bit of the findings in the EIR.
Good morning. As Eric mentioned, the primary topics that were assessed in terms of impacts of project construction and operation were aesthetics and visual resources, air quality and global climate change, noise, traffic circulation and parking, and the three alternatives. There will, based on the analysis in the EIR, there were a few issue areas that would result in significant unavoidable impacts that could not be mitigated to a level of less than significant with a range of feasible mitigation measures. Those impacts are related to aesthetics in terms of off-site light and glare impacts to sensitive resources located within a close distance to the project site boundaries and parking. If there's any specific questions about those impact areas, I can answer them in terms of why they're significant or unavoidable.
Otherwise, your presentation is concluded, or?
Yeah, I mean, I just provided an overview. I can, I, for aesthetics, I can just explain this briefly. For light and glare, we worked with Musco, which is the light manufacturer that would be providing the sports field lighting, and prepared a visual simulation that would project nighttime lighting under the most conservative assumptions. Those assumptions being that no ambient light would exist off the project site boundaries and all light to fall on off-site sensitive receptors would come from the proposed lighting. In the instance that that is true, which would require a blackout off-site and generators to run the lights onsite, there would be some indirect ambient light that would fall on sensitive receptors adjacent, but it would not travel horizontally, it would not be direct, and it wouldn't go directly into windows. However, because the modeling showed that there would be some indirect light spillage and there's no quantitative threshold within the CEQA Guidelines or within the city's approach to CEQA, we identified a significant unavoidable impact to sensitive receptors based on light and glare.
So you're being somewhat conservative in your assumption that there's going to be a significant impact on, with respect to this impact?
Right. The assumption was that any light spillage-
Okay.
-in any form would result in an impact, a project-level impact.
I do have a question about the lighting and actually it came up in review of the no-lighting alternative. I'm looking at page 7.0-3. You seem to study both direct lighting as well as ambient lighting?
Right.
Yes, okay. Says it on, the no-lighting alternative would not include any lighting for, for the nighttime. The proposed project, which is to say, not the alternative, but the proposed project would increase ambient lighting and result in light spilling onto adjacent sensitive receptors. However, lighting would only spill onto the rooftops of adjacent sensitive receptors. Are you talking about direct lighting there?
Yes.
Okay. So if the adjacent apartment building is set some feet off the property line and there's a light pole some feet away and it's direct lighting comes onto the rooftop, how is it not also going to come to the windows?
The, there's hoods that focus the lighting and there's basically five or six light configurations in terms of the way that the light is projected, and it's a gradient that starts, that actually projects light forward and then projects it down. The way that it would project light across the field and onto the sensitive receptors is the light that is the strongest and would not be filtered is the light that travels straight across, that would be on the upper portions of the rooftop. The light that actually comes down is concentrated on the field and would spill in an ambient manner, mostly on the street and potentially on the sensitive receptor. And that's, that's the way that the gradient is. The, there's other hood configurations that Musco, the light manufacturer, can provide, but they, this would allow the, the poles to be high enough that most of the spillage would be lower. So they could use fewer light poles and make them, use shorter light poles but more, use more of them, and, and that would guarantee no light spillage off-site, but it would, it would be a total configuration. There's some cost considerations to that as well. But with the current configuration, the ambient spillage would be indirect.
Okay, so with the current configuration, then the direct lighting either goes out directly horizontally or down. It doesn't go out at an angle?
No.
Okay.
And then I have a question on the parking.
Sure.
Just, again, it sounds like you assume the most conservative assumption-
Right.
-that the parking, that there's adequate off-street parking for the use, but you treated that as, as not being a mitigation measure or a project design feature, therefore being, it's significant?
Correct. The, the assumption for demand was incredibly conservative in the first place. We assumed that each individual child would have a parent driving a car, so no carpooling. Each individual referee would drive their own car and not carpool, and there would be additional spectators that are not family members that would drive their own cars. So we came up with a demand of 106 parking spaces required for one game at a time. There's 53 spaces onsite. Our parking consultant looked at a quarter-mile walking radius from the two entry points of the project site and found that there would be 53 spaces off-site, but they could not be guaranteed to be available or tied to the project. And because no parking code standard exists for this use, and we generated a demand based on a site-specific, project-specific analysis using a series of assumptions that don't exist in the code, we felt that it would be a significant unavoidable impact because 106 parking spaces could not be provided onsite.
I'm sorry, you said 53 available offsite, but none onsite?
There's 53 available onsite, but the demand is 106.
Okay, so it's basically half?
Half.
Okay. All right.
And could either you or staff explain the alternatives?
I'll direct that to the consultant.
A range of alternative sites were looked at in addition to the no-project alternative to meet the project objective, which is a deficiency in the number of available soccer fields for youth in the City of Glendale. And there was insufficient sites that were found that would be suitable for this type of joint use. It would require either acquisition or it would require redevelopment. There would be no joint-use opportunities to allow for a field of this size for AYSO 16 and under. And then the other was the no-lighting alternative, which would meet the goals and objectives but would dilute the ability- but would dilute the ability of the project to meet the objectives to the degree that they're, that they're necessary in that after-school operation of the field would be limited to daytime hours, and evening operation over the weekends would be restricted as well. So the environmental superior alternative was the no project alternative because the significant unavoidable impacts would be avoided, but the other alternatives would not remove or allow for a range of feasible mitigation measures to reduce the significant unavoidable impacts to a degree that the goals and objectives could still be met.
So I'll turn, between the project and alternative three, the project creates on a net basis more and more soccer fields?
Correct.
Okay.
Any further questions on the technical aspects of the EIR? Dr. Galanian?
Thank you.
I don't have any more speaker cards, if anyone would like to speak.
Board Member Foy, Dave Ahern, Acting Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation or Community Services and Parks. And I'll fill out a speaker card, sir.
Thank you.
Just wanted to follow up on a couple of items. The, the conservative approach in this analysis we've taken, as Ali has shared with you, reflects our recognition of the impacts that are potentially developed by the location of this project. As you know, it's a joint use project with the school district. The first phase of the project was the, the school facility that was developed on their existing playground, and then the remaining portion of, of the site, which is where the school buildings used to be, is now the area where the soccer field is, is proposed and, and currently is. There's a field there right now. It's just not an artificial turf field, and it's not open to the public on the evenings or on the weekends. So if we had a blank slate to choose from, this isn't the location we would pick, but we don't have a blank slate, so this is it. And we're trying to, to be very realistic about about what this project does. It creates a, a new soccer field for use by the community on the evening, on the weekends and during the evening, but we have concerns about what it could do to the residents that live 20 feet from, from where the soccer field is, a three-story apartment building, and as well as the surrounding area by bringing in this level of, of traffic volumes evenings and weekends in, into this neighborhood. So at the end of the day, this will be a policy decision for, for the council, but we want to draw out all the potential issues. We're doing additional public meetings that we're not required to do so that the community is fully aware, and, and it's all in the spirit of what the, the SEQA process is about, its disclosure and information. And so we want to make sure that we fully disclose to the community what this is, and then looking at the alternatives. And Ali said there were no other sites and he's, that would provide the same size field as this, and I want to be clear on that. There are other schools that could be used, but we wouldn't have the same size field. Now, that doesn't mean you can't do it, it just means you'd have a potentially smaller field like Pacific, Edison School, or Roosevelt, which would be two alternatives but wouldn't provide the same size field, and that's why they're, they're not identified as being equivalent. And then the no lighting alternative, if we don't have lights, we can't use the field at night, during the week, or on the weekend, which means we would have the field on the weekends from, say, eight to five on Saturday and Sunday. Well, that's less than 50% of the time that we're, we're investing into build this thing. So it, again, it's a policy decision for the council to make, but it's one that probably doesn't make a lot of sense. And at the end of the day, we'll lay out all the options for, for the council and to the community, and make sure that we do something that gives council the most options. And then we'll, we'll proceed as directed. So, so this project is funded by the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, another example of the redevelopment agency building parks in our community. In the last three years, they've spent almost $13 million on building park facilities in Glendale, so it's great to have a partner like that helping to improve the community. We can, Jeff Weinstein is our project manager from Parks, he's here. You've probably heard enough from me, and so if there's any questions, we'd be happy to, to respond.
I have a question, Mr. Ahern.
All right.
Alternative number three, just like clarification on the disadvantages or drawbacks, since at least on three elements, it would result in fewer or less severe impacts as compared to the proposed project. See traffic, noise, at minimum, since you're using the existing fields?
Right. That field currently has lighting, and it's currently used as a joint use facility. It's just smaller. That, that's the only drawback to, to that field.
How much smaller?
Not much, not much. But it's not a, you know, it's not a CIF field, but it's a smaller field. So you, it's, it's a very good point that
There's already a field on it?
Well, there's a, a dirt field, and it really is dirt. It gets so much use, they can't keep grass on it. This would provide an artificial field that would be of a higher quality, and AYSO won't play on that field because of the condition of that field. So from that standpoint, it would be a new field for AYSO, but it, it's an existing facility. This would improve it quite a bit. It would get probably phenomenal amount of use if it were improved as an artificial turf field. Anything else? Gone once, gone twice? Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
I just wanted to add that the, when we do release this for public review, it's going to be available for a 45-day public comment period, and then we're also going to have another meeting with the public to get some feedback and comments from them as well on the draft EIR itself.
Yeah, I'd like to confirm with you the purpose of this meeting and the general process of this. So we're not today deciding whether to approve the lights?
No, no, today's meeting is just to allow the draft EIR to be available for public review, so there's no actual project approvals of any kind, it's just
We're not, I mean, we're not even approving the EIR, we're just
No, we're just, the essential finding is to, is, is the Environmental Planning Board is charged with making sure that the environmental impact report is prepared in compliance with SEQA.
And the environmental review period has to be, I mean, the environmental documentation has to be made available to the decision makers and to the public before council can make the decision?
Correct, yeah, and it's, we're going to have the EIR posted on the city's website, it'll be available to Central Library as well as the Parks Department, Planning Department. So it's going to, and then we're going to send out another notice that we did a very large noticing for the actual scoping meeting itself, and to not just the property owners, but the actual residents in the area. So I, I think it was like over a thousand notices that we sent out for the scoping meeting, so we'll do the same thing for the draft EIR as well.
Mr. Foy, we, as Eric said, we mail to every resident and property owner within 1,000 feet of that facility, and we'll do the same mailing, which is far beyond what's required. And we'll hold another community meeting at the school in the evening to let residents know about the EIR, explain it, answer their questions, and make sure that they have an opportunity to see the document. We have an extended review period of 45 days instead of the normal 30 days, so we're going to take extra steps to inform the community and get that input before it goes to council.
Okay, and can you describe, if we do get comments from the community, what happens to those?
Those comments will be included as part of the final environmental impact report, which, when you prepare the final, it requires you to address comments you got from the public as well as some of the other agencies, that'll be made as part of the final environmental impact report.
And that too will be completed, and there'll be time to review that before the council makes its decision?
SEQA requires that if agencies have commented on the EIR, that it's made available 10 days prior to certification, so that's kind of the timeline for the final EIR. We wouldn't necessarily, if, if the public commented, we wouldn't send responses to those comments directly to them, but we would make them aware that the final is available for review.
Okay. And, but the final will be made avail, made available for review before the council makes its decision on the lighting?
Correct.
Mr. Kraus or Mr. Ahern, the notices that go to the community, do they go to the property owners?
In, in our case, we mail to the property owners and the tenants.
And the tenants, since there's several multifamily
We end up sending a, probably, about, I think we sent 4,000 notices last time. So I think the requirement is that you notify the property owners.
Yeah, the, the requirement is just the property owners, however, we, in this case, we did notify the actual residents of those units as well.
And what's the radius on?
500 is the minimum requirement for the
So, so we're going 1,000, and we're doing property owners and tenants? Okay.
So at this point, staff recommends that the Environmental Planning Board find that the draft EIR has been adequately prepared per SEQA and authorize that the draft EIR be released for public review and comment.
So moved.
Second. Do I have a, a motion and a second? Roll call, Commissioner Galanian?
Aye.
Commissioners, actually it's board members, sorry. Board Member Galanian. And Board Member Foy?
Yes.
Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Motion approved 3-0, thank you.
Okay, we have no other business, and
Move the adjourn.
Thank you.